In the last four years, the Passport Intervention Team have always come in the month of August. You know, but hopefully with the support of His Excellency, I'm sure in no short time, the Passport Intervention Team will be over before we know it.
But you surprise me, it's not five people, it's a whole filled with people. Nigerian, you are my friend and I am your brother. How many Nigerians are in Qatar? You will start telling me about, about, is it not true? I would want to officially tell you, we have 10,763 Nigerians that are here. I am assuring you, there is no Nigerian that will suffer discrimination of any sort under my watch in Qatar. If you chooses not to be free, you have your own to blame, not me, not the embassy.
It is gratifying to note that the agenda that we have today covers some of the things affecting our community that we will discuss today. Fellow Nigerians, on the night of March, when these present executives were inaugurated, little did we know that we will have His Excellency that is welcoming and supportive. On our first visit to His Excellency, he welcomed us and he showed us a fatherly figure. Some of the things we discussed with him on that day is why we are here today. When we went to him, first we told him His Excellency, we would want to have a town hall because it's been a long time we've had a town hall within the Nigerian community. And His Excellency said, "You people give me a date." And by my own calculation, I was already giving a date in May in anticipation that before the Ramadan, let's have a town hall. But luckily for us, His Excellency thought otherwise and said, "Instead of us to wait that long until May, why don't we fix a date in April?" You know, that was beyond our own calculation. So first we chose the dates in... His Excellency gave us a date, April 13th. And we were working round the clock to get a venue, knowing that at this time of the year in Qatar, there are lots of events happening everywhere, in hotels and everywhere. So we couldn't get a venue on time. And His Excellency, coordinating with NIDU executives, we were able to postpone the town hall and we secured a date for the 27th, which is today. So it's noteworthy to mention that His Excellency was really in support and he was even the one who gave us this date because our plan was to have this thing in May before Ramadan. Some of the things we discussed with His Excellency when we met on that day, it will interest you to know that during my inauguration, I said one of the things I wanted to achieve as Nidu President, knowing how difficult it is to renew passports, was for us to have a permanent passport machine here in Qatar. When we presented it to His Excellency, His Excellency was very supportive of it and His Excellency said something that if he chooses to say it, that would be fine. But all I'm saying is that when we presented it to His Excellency, apart from him showing us his support that it is possible for us to have it here, he's going to use all his support to say that we have it here. His Excellency also suggested if we have good numbers of Nigerians who are interested to do new passports, we could readily have the Passport Intervention Team to come on time. In the last four years, the Passport Intervention Team have always come in the month of August. You know, but hopefully with the support of His Excellency, I'm sure in no short time, the Passport Intervention Team will be over before we know it. His Excellency, this is to inform you that we sent an email out to the community requesting for pre-registration of people who are interested. And within, it's about four days since we sent that email. And by my account of the secretary, just this evening, he was telling me it's about 180 so far. So His Excellency, already we have 180 Nigerians who are in need of passports as we speak. When we assumed office on the day of my inauguration, I said I was going to consolidate on some of the MOUs we've signed with some organizations in Qatar like the National Human Rights Commission of Qatar, the Supreme Committee for Delivery and Legacy, and Ethiopian Airlines. It's about six weeks or seven weeks since we assumed office. And what we've done so far is we've visited Ethiopian Airlines, knowing that we have an MOU with Ethiopian Airlines. We went to Ethiopian Airlines to see if we can renew the MOU we have with them because there is a distant goal that Ethiopian Airlines supports the Nigerian community with. Unfortunately, the country head of the airline said, "At the moment, they are still reviewing the contract we have with them. They need approval from Adis Ababa to start, for them to reopen the MOU we have with them." So that one is something we hope we can achieve in no short time. The Qatar Red President happens to be one institute in Qatar that has been very, very supportive of the Nigerian community. It's on record that the Qatar Red President, last year, I'm sure for a few Nigerians who were, last year, the institute supported the Nigerian community in terms of, last year we lost a Nigerian and the Qatar Red President foots the bill in repatriating the money back home. You know, and this year, we were hoping to start fresh with them in consonance with what was happening with the last executive. And we reached a strategic partnership agreement with them, hoping to sign an MOU with them very soon. And first thing they said was, "We have a food basket program" that they want the Nigerian community to be part of. And he gave us 70 smots, we sent an email out. Yesterday, we just delivered the names to Red President for 69 Nigerian Nidu families that we are ready to support in the period of the Ramadan. And yesterday also, they confirmed to us that they are ready to support bachelors within the Nigerian community that are jobless, that are in search of job or out of job. And they have the program called Food Bank and that will be starting very soon. We'll be sending an email to the community on Sunday. They requested us to give them names of unemployed Nigerians who are interested to be part of the Food Bank program. Also, on assuming office, to make our work smoother, what we did was, it's knowing how Qatar is, it's difficult to always move around to get things done. So we set up a committee, we set up committees to make the daily work of Nidu Qatar effective. We have a database committee which is responsible to collect names, phone numbers and email addresses of Nigerians in Qatar. I will inform you today that Nidu Qatar is amongst the diaspora organizations recognized by the Federal Government of Nigeria. Recently, the government created a platform that we will share to the community very soon that they are requesting for a database of all Nigerians all over the world for a project that will soon be launched in Nigeria. We have a committee for membership. That committee is responsible to see how we can bring in new members into Nidu Qatar. During the last election, we had an unprecedented number of members who joined the Nidu proxy of the election. We don't want to just use the election as the only platform where we bring in new members. That was where we created a membership committee that will always look into ways of bringing Nigerians into Nidu. We also have the Business Opportunities Committee, which is... The Business Opportunity Committees, there are so many opportunities here in Qatar. And very soon, there is going to be a Nigerian Qatar Business Council which is registered here in Qatar already. And they are affiliated to Nidu and they will be launched very soon. It will be working hand in hand. And we hope that in delivering our service, we'll get all the support from the community. We'll get all the support from members of the community. We are open to your feedback, we are open to your suggestions. And it's quite gratifying to see that the hall is filled now. I'm really excited, my time is fast spent. At this point, it is important that we pay attention as I call on stage His Excellency, Ambassador of Nigeria to Qatar, Dr. Amrullah Bawa Abdaalwasi.
As we are having the ambassador, I'd say one or two things about the party with microphone. I may have to say that I've been in Qatar, you're welcome, Your Excellency. I've been in Qatar for quite some time and I've met a lot of ambassadors. But I will say that Nigerian ambassadors and the non-Nigerian ambassadors have saved. But I'm saying that I am meeting for the first time the most humble, thankful heart and ready to serve ambassador. And we have a businessman who is not only a diplomat, but a father who is ready to support the community. Who sent us all our food, the first day we met him. Because we went with a list of so many things. And if my memory will not disappoint me, I will not say that there was one that he chewed back at us. He was there saying that if that is what your people want, I'm here to back you. May I say a big round of applause for our ambassador, Yorin.
Fellow compatriots, my people, Nigerians. Today is a wonderful day for a number of reasons. One, I arrived here on the 27th of October 2017 and today is 27th of April 2018. That makes it exactly six months half year of the year. Secondly, I am glad that the hall is filled. I told Mr. President and his team that if even five people are coming that are Nigerian, we are ready to move forward. But you surprise me, it's not five people, it's a whole filled with people. Nigerian, you are my friend and I am your brother. I would like to say that there are a number of things without anybody telling us, we should tell ourselves. Nigeria number one is created specially in the 54 nations of Africa as the largest in terms of density, you know that. God do not make mistakes. He makes that to ensure and portray that special thing in us. Number two, where we are today called Qatar is one place that I can hit my chest at any given moment to stand for because of their simplicity of accommodation, acceptance and discipline. Now we have things that are very similar with them. They have oil, we have oil. Indeed, we are number six oil producers in the whole world, you know that. They have gas, we have gas. As a matter of fact, we are number fifth possessors of hard rock carbon in the whole world. Fantastic. What is remaining? Human capitation, which I would want to say, we have it in excess abundance because of our density, which I have mentioned earlier. With all this that I have said, where are we lacking? We are lacking only solely on how we will agree to harness ourselves and tap the full essentialities of the gift that we have from our creator that is God. How do we do it? The way we are to do it is the way that you have now done it. You created an association, you have officials that are running, elected by you and particularly very fresh ones for that matter. I could read the seals in them when they came. And I say, "Oh, then there will be progress." There is something that is bordering my mind. And I will now tell you. Of all the citizens of the world that are in this Qatar, we are the least beneficial of what is bordering my mind. You might not be aware, but I should, that the government itself takes lots of workforce through means that is legitimate. When we begin to hear stories of people spending million, half million, 800,000 to secure visa, it bleeds in my, in my heart. If we are to organize and do things orderly, like the President had mentioned, you don't need to spend a dime other than the stipend that is normally charged to any other issuance of visa. This is a fact, this is true and I will live to ensure that that is done and meted. That apart, we are working silently with the government and order huge gigantic business enterprises that exist in Qatar to ensure that we officially submit to them list of able, capable Nigerians that can be able to turn for them, defend for them and mend for their needs. And we can do that. I'm assuring you, as long as we will make up our mind to be lovely, dutiful. I have a written speech, there is no need I even read the speech. Maybe I will pick one after the other, so as to enable us know what to do. Number one, what is the need of coming for the town hall meeting today? The need number one is for me to see your faces and for you to also see my face. Maybe we have met with some of you somewhere. We all look at ourselves as black people either from Kenya, Uganda, Nigeria, Ghana. Nobody knows where you come from. Meanwhile, I am one of you and you are also for me, as I am for you. So with this meeting now, the town hall meeting, we should be in the position to now say yes, we know ourselves, anytime, anywhere, anyway. We cannot deny ourselves, we must stand for what we know we are. I will tell you a small story. This time around, what happened in 2016, the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria decided to choose his ambassadors himself because he wanted to depart from the past. And his major condiments of choosing ambassadors are total quality management. That was why the 48 non-career ambassadors that the President chose, on the 20th of October 2006, out of which I am among, we have 11 professors. We have 18 PhD holders. We have five former secretary to the governments of different states of Nigeria. We have nine retired major generals. And one novelty. By what I am telling you, he departed entirely for appointing all the politicians to become ambassadors. He wanted professionals, he wanted people who are actual torchbearers, who can come and represent Nigeria in whichever country they are sent with the quality that is required for the representative of the Federal Republic of Nigeria in that country. And that makes it completely different from the older period where as the only qualification you need to be an ambassador. Of course, you will go to school, but school is not the only qualification. As at that time, you have to be a politician. And no matter which kind of school you go as a politician and as long as you can have the right body to torch, you could be an ambassador. But I can now stand to tell you that that thing is gone and gone forever. Anybody that is called an ambassador in Nigeria this time, in this our time, is highly qualified to be an ambassador of his own country. That was why we had a lot of trouble with the senators. Initially, they rejected the names because the governors wanted to give them. The President says, "It's not taking them from governors. It has to linger until January 13th." The names were resubmitted as if, as if for the earlier. They have no choice. In February, they screened. Only two among 43 of us were not able to make it. All the others made it and all the other were ousted. And the two were replaced and that is how the story goes. Back to total quality, quality management. I have seen of my comment here, you may not know, we have our own way of taking our records. I have asked here and there, I can even ask at this moment, the all of you that are seated here when I ask, "How many Nigerians are in Qatar?", you will start telling me about, about, is it not true? We are not taking on human being. And when taking on human being, you start saying about, there is nothing like that. You have to know how many you are here. And I would want to officially tell you, we have 10,763 Nigerians that are here. Forget about all the about, about, about here already. We are the owners of the record and we are using it usefully so that we can plan properly for each and every one of us that is here. And for instance, when we go back to that total quality management which we have seen from the example of Mr. President on the appointment of ambassadors, I can tell you something that I have seen in you that you are here. I already have the total of 1,812 engineers of various grades that are Nigerians and are there in Qatar. I have a record, nothing less than 52 architects that are all Nigerians and that are working here in Qatar right away as I'm doing. We have a number of competent, qualified medical doctors that are all Nigerians and working here. In fact, one of them was from London, who has almost 30 years, 31 years experience as a medical doctor. Another one just called me from London. He went there before yesterday, that I should tender his apology. That one even in Qatar, he is the chairman of Management Committee of all patients that are either in the hospital or have been discharged, still undergoing investigation. Is a Nigerian like me and you? Now, who can tell me that we do not have quality Nigerians here? And we are happy because we have come to a country that is very much organized, that is very much simple, that does not want to rate you on the account of which religion you belong, which language you speak. As long as you are here and you have something doing, you will have no problem with the authority of this place. This I can bear witness for that number of months I have told you I spent. Let me say, my intention was to come here and do the first October celebrations with you 2017, like the President was saying, you have expected me. Unfortunately, in the way we do our things there, it was not possible for me to leave my country before October 26th. That was why it pained me. I wanted to come and ginger a difference. I wanted to come and feet the ground and set the ball running so that we would all start up together and continue from where we stopped and eliminate whatever slumber that we have been encountering. Thank God, God made it possible in October I came. The first story I will tell you, I have never in my life, never in my life been sick. Not stomachache, not headache. The first time I became sick was on the 4th of December. Here, when I went to do medical checkup and I was admitted in the hospital, not that I was sleeping, they said they have discovered my blood lead is low and my white blood capsules is not producing effectively. I have to stay at a hospital for two solid months. This constituted the reason as to why I have not been able to see you This constituted the reason as to why I have not been able to see you until today. It's not in my character. If the first week I come, I did not see you, the second week I would have gathered you here and talked with you, and let us start from there. I am assuring you, there is no Nigeria that will suffer discrimination of any sort under my watch in Qatar. If you chooses not to be free, you have your own to blame, not me, not the embassy. It is your home. We know is true, the purpose of creating embassy under the Geneva Convention and Vienna Revolution is not because they will create an embassy for you to go and bring the people of your country to that, no. It is only for inter-country relationship, to do so many things together, that has to do with security, that has to do with economy, that has to do with social awareness, that has to do with general development, and so on and so forth. In fact, even where there is no single in person from your own country that is existing in another country, there could still be embassy. It is planned in such a way that it's an activity between the government of that country and the representative of the government of your country in the country they are operating. So every ambassador is the president of his country in another man's country. This is the purpose why embassies are created. But that is also not to say that if you come and you find your people in that country, you will not serve them. You will serve them wholly, and part of the service is to know if they are firing well. Part of the services is to know if they have any problem. Part of the services is to solve consular matters, which includes passport issuance and temporary traveling, document issuance, and what do you and what I do. But let me advise, what is the need for you when you know your visa is about to expire? You will wait until a day or two expiration will go. What are you doing? You are not making yourself. In fact, even if it's to be one month or two months for your own international passport to expire, take the data page, come to the embassy and say you are political. Yeah, and then you will be recognized. And with regards to us coming to do passport for you was in air, it was entirely dependent upon the statistic received. It was completely as a result of absence of data that should come in an organized format. I am now happy, within few moments, that your presidency asks for you to document that those that are requiring replacement, they have gotten over 180. This is encouraging. And of course, if you have that number, nothing stops me from ensuring proper attention, proper action, and you have your passport. Thank you. I will stop at this moment.
Thank you, His Excellency. We are very grateful for having you here this evening. And I will say what my president did not say about it earlier. But before I go to that, I want to believe that I'm being vindicated. When I said, when I was introducing him, that we have got somebody who is down to act and ready to serve, I think he has proved me right. Am I correct?